Um, the board. All right. Good evening and welcome. The board concluded our executive session at 5:33 PM. I mean, I'm sorry, at 6:30 PM, and there was no action taken during executive session. I would like to call to order the regular CSD board meeting for July 12th, 2022 at 6:33. Thank you for joining us this evening. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. At this time, um, I won't ask you to stand, but if everyone would please, um, join in for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda for this evening? Okay, here and now, may I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Move to approve the agenda for this evening?
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the agenda for the meeting this evening, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The agenda for this evening is approved. Our next agenda item is the approval of the minutes from the previous board meeting, the final taxpayer bill of rights hearing, and the specially called board meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June board meeting, taxpayer, taxpayer bill of rights hearing, and especially called board meeting?
I move to approve all of the items that you just mentioned to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the June board meeting, taxpayer bill of rights hearing, and especially called board meeting, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The minutes for the June board meeting, taxpayer bill of rights hearing, and especially called board meeting are approved. At this time, we will move to on to public comment. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the public signed up to share comments this evening?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and is, um, Ms. Tasha White on? We, I don't think Tasha's made it back on. Okay.
No, I don't see her on here.
Okay, but we could, we can continue this level form. Okay.
Someone want to try to reach out to her and see if she's having trouble getting on?
I'm doing it right now.
Thank you. All right. So since we don't have any public comments, then we will, um, turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman to share superintendent comments this evening.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Good to see people's faces and thank you for, um, tuning in virtually since we're not in person today. As I did have a couple of things to share, I wanted to update the board and the community. We've been talking, I talked last time about our district improvement plan and how we re-envisioned, um, how we are going to implement and support the equitable outcomes through students, through what we teach, how we teach it, professional learning and growth for teachers, and systems of support. So I wanted to dig a little deeper into this, um, each, these four areas. So for standards plus, this is about what we teach. This is making sure that we teach our students rigorous content that elevates marginalized voices. And that's just a quick little summary, and what I wanted to do this time around is just dig in a little bit deeper on what we're doing for that and what that will look like in this upcoming year. So I want to make sure that we are providing an academically challenging environment that both aligns with and enhances the door to standards of excellence through our standards plus content. And that is making sure that we are looking at multiple perspectives, supporting our students, elevating marginalized voices, and embedding historically accurate information. Implementing an anti-racist assessment practices that is re-looking at how are we grading, making sure that we are using equitable practices for grading and assessment, all that transparency in grading, making sure we're communicating in a timely manner, um, and really assessing our students on how they're performing on the standards. This area also makes social emotional learning and healing-centered pedagogy a focus of our instruction. We want to draw on our student culture to shape the curriculum, and we want to make real-world issues a key focus for the content. When we think about high-leverage practices, then we talked about standards plus is what we teach, high-leverage practices is how, how we teach. That's the use of scientifically-based instructional practices and literacy culturally-relevant practice that is universally used across the district. For this goal, we are going to focus this year on implementing warm demander and caring and culturally-mediated instruction. We want to interpret our instructional practices that produce independent, or interrupt, sorry, instructional practices that produce dependent learners and make sure our students are really motivating themselves and coming to the classroom ready and eager to learn, consistently communicating our high academic expectations for each student and empower students to achieve those expectations. It continue to implement our literacy plan and address live, lived experiences and engage current events and challenge the society through a social justice lens and a key focus of instruction. And we're also going to be deepening our systems of support, and this is that support for each student to make sure that they have the opportunity and individualized supports for what they need to excel. Um, in this area, we're going to be modeling and promoting respect, anti-bias and appreciation for student differences, implementing a student-focused change, implementing student-focused changes within the school system, the classrooms, and paying the educational debt to our historically marginalized groups, providing the comprehensive services and supports that will foster behavioral, social, emotional, and mental well-being, and then also implementing culturally-responsive and restorative discipline practices. And the final area, professional growth, this is about investing in our staff through high-quality differentiated, differentiated training for every staff member in our system. We want to engage in learning and action and growth related to professional racial identify, personal racial identify, identity, anti-racism and bias. We want to develop cultural humility as a system, identify how our personal cultural lens influences perceptions of students and work to eliminate deficit perspectives, and making sure also that we are establishing relationships and collaborating with our families, caretakers, and local community. So those are the four, kind of a little more information on those four, and then we're going to have some specific goals that we will share next time. The next thing I wanted to update the board on is the strategic planning process. We are still kind of in this working on the final calendar and conversations with Lanita from GSBA on fine-tuning all of these dates. So nothing really new here to report to the board, just that we are still working on this. And we will have for the August 9th calendar, um, board meeting, our final calendar, and be able to share with stakeholders when they can start signing up for being parts of the planning team, um, and when we will be having our stakeholder engagement session. So just an update on where we are with that. Also wanted to share with the board, um, the calendar for our policy manual revisions. Um, so a lot has already been happened. I've done a lot of work on this over the summer. It was a great time for that. Um, so we, uh, we did our initial presentation to the board, agreed on the process. We had our initial planning meeting with GSBA, um, and then went ahead and they had, we had GSBA draft um, an initial set of state-required policies. So we have those in hand. We're starting to look through those. But what we needed to also talk through was how are we going to communicate with our public and with our, um, our stakeholders and our staff of which policies are where. Um, so we created a policy crosswalk. I'm going to pull up, and we will put this on our website so that people will have a very clear understanding of what we have and where they can find it. And once we start embedding things, we can put links in here as well. So what I did over the summer is I went through the board, the board policy manual, we had way back before the model that we have right now. And if there's an X in the box, it means there was a policy back when we had that old policy manual in place. Um, and then we right now are operating under this Carver model. So if there is a policy in place under the Carver model, I've put it here, or an administrative regulation, I've put that there. And then this third column is 2022 manual, which are the new, uh, the new manual that we will be building. Um, and the policies are organized in a kind of a very different way than what we have right now. So they have, um, like a, the letter A is anything about our school district organization. School board operations is category B, and then each of these topics has its own category. Um, and what you'll notice as we kind of look through this is there are some of these lines are orange. The orange lines, uh, the cells that are highlighted in orange are the board policies that have already been drafted and are the ones we are required to have by law, um, through, um, through the Title 20. So these are correct, already drafted. You've got to start, you know, going through, teasing those out. Once the board has had the opportunity to review those and approve them, we will start, um, that process in August. But, um, just so that there's a place for people to look. So if someone says, well, you know, there's the old manual, we'll have that length, we'll have the new manual. People will be able to access all of these tools, but we want to make sure they're finding the right place. So as we finalize new policy, we will, um, go into this spreadsheet and kind of cross out the ones that are old that we're not going to use anymore and, and insert a link for the new policy so that that is accessible. Um, so that's the crosswalk that we did, um, and met with our legal team to review our initial draft of those policies, talked about the crosswalk, um, and are really working with our legal team on what are the next steps as we go through this cycle of policy review, adoption, and approval hopefully for the board. Um, so today we're doing the presentation of the timeline of the draft. So the next step, um, will be August 23rd at our work session. Uh, we will be digging into what are the reform policies that the board wants to select? And the, the reform policies are those really needy policies like our equity action plan. That to me is one of those things where we want the board to really lean in and help us frame what is our approach to equity? What's our policy around equity? What are, with our policy around, like promotion or how our student, you know, what students may need to graduate high school? So we'll start working with the board on selecting a few of those, working with the board to draft those. And then every time we finish one, we'll pick another one up and kind of keep something in the hopper so that we can must muscle through and get all of these approved, um, throughout the year. So this is kind of an ongoing process that'll work like a cycle. Um, let's see, did also want to update the board on current enrollment numbers. Um, we just updated these this afternoon. So this is our current enrollment that we have at each of our schools. But I also want to show you on the, our total enrollment is 5,444. And this is the difference on projection. So the green cells are where we are over what they projected we would be at, and the red cells are where we are below. And in total, we are over total projection by 136. Um, and you can see the trend is we're under enrollment, um, in our lower elementaries, above enrollment in upper and high school, and still a little bit below at Beacon Hill. Um, so that's the process. Those are the numbers where we are. We're continuing to get new students enrolled every day. Um, and some kids are, um, some families are moving out of our system every day. So it's, we're still in a very flux situation, but I did want to update the board on our current enrollment numbers, and we're watching those, uh, weekly. Did also want to update the board on where we are with renaming, um, our middle school to Beacon Hill. So we have gone ahead and submitted the name change to the Department of Education. Um, and this leads up to the update with NCES in the fall, um, which in turn affects a lot of other third-party storage stores. Uh, most internal data systems have been updated, highly visible ones and online resources, social media, Google Maps, businesses have been updated. Web page changes have started with the goal of having all the changes made by the start of the school year. The marquee and the exterior, uh, lettering proofs have been approved. The company is manufacturing them. Um, and we have an estimated delivery date in July, um, but hopefully supply, um, supply chains stay steady and we are able to get those and installed before the first date of school. That's our goal. They are also working on changing the name on the gym floor. That will happen the last week of July when the floor is refinished. Um, also in the gym, there's a big, um, there was a big sign in there that has Renfro, and we have a plan for a custom item that will, um, we'll put up in that space. The vendor is scheduled for a site visit to determine the dimensions and specs and put a plan together for that. School leadership and our PTA have been working on logos and other name change projects as well as, uh, school dedication event. So just wanted to give the board an update on where we are. Um, and we also want to share with the community and the board, if you see places you think we haven't caught and should be updating and paying attention to, please let us know so that we can get those things, um, updated and changed. So that is, those are my comments for this evening. Any questions from the board?
No, I don't have.
I did have, I did have one comment, Dr. Furman. I think there was a question about a recent report regarding an incorrect mileage rate that had been reported. I want to know if there was a correction there?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. I meant to follow up with Ms. Burnett. She was going to reach out to the AJC on that. So Courtney, do you have an update on that?
I'm muted. Do you think I've learned how to do this by now? That correction has not been filed yet, but we're working on it.
Okay, and Hans, thank you for letting me know. I hadn't seen that story that the AJC, um, reported that we raised our mileage rate. We did not raise our mileage rate. Um, so we are working on that to make sure that they can give you that correction.
Thanks for that clarification and thanks, um, Hans for bringing that to our attention. All right, we will move on to the chair's comments and, um, kind of brief this evening, uh, but I hope that our district administrators enjoyed their recent break. Um, I hope our students and teachers are enjoying the remaining few weeks of summer break. Um, Dr. Furman and her team are working hard to ensure a smooth and exciting start to the school year while the board is priming itself to engage in the superintendent search, the development of a new strategic plan, and the revision of our policy manual, manual, as Dr. Furman just shared. As we all prepare for the work of the upcoming school year, I'd like to challenge the CSD community to remember to be present um, and to appreciate the moments of today. Um, for me, that has been one of the biggest lessons, um, of the pandemic. So I hope everybody will keep that in mind to just, you know, be present as we continue to prepare for all of these big things that we have coming up. Um, and speaking of lessons, despite the fact the school is out, our CSD teachers and students continue to excel. Congratulations to the Decatur students that competed into the Cab County branch of the NAACP's ACO competition. Decatur High winners for the local competition include gold medalists Salmon Kane, Smith Shamadee, Anna Villavasso, and Sultan Zaid. Um, these students are also DHS 2022 graduates. Rising junior Audrey Ferguson Brown, rising sophomore Jackson Jeffrey, and rising senior Asha Foley were all bronze medalists along with Anna Villavasso and Salmon Kane, Smith Shamadee, who all, who both also earned bronze medals for other categories. So congratulations, guys. Congratulations to the Claremont crew on their EL education credential renewal. The EL team shared this about Claremont. This milestone recognizes your school's continued incredible work and impact for students. Claremont Elementary School continues to demonstrate excellence and equity for students through the implementation of the EL education model. Keep up the good work, Claremont crew. Congratulations to Ms. Vashanda Bolton from Beacon Hill Middle and Ms. Deidre Pierce from Decatur High for completing the computer science endorsement requirement for Georgia professional standards. Both teachers took on this challenge when they were, um, hired by CSD, and they have been excellent professionals in the short time that they have been with us. So congratulations again, Ms. Bolton and Ms. Pierce. That concludes my chair's comments. All right, so now we will move on to our consent agenda items, um, which include the personnel report, school nutrition, and financial reports. May I have a motion to approve the consent items one through three?
Move to approve consent items one through three.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The consent agenda items one through three are approved. We will now move on to the action items for the board this evening. Our first action item is a budget amendment for the fiscal year 23 budget. Dr. Furman, can you please share an overview of this amendment with the board?
Yes, let me share my screen. Okay, um, so we are at the point where we are closing out, um, half closed out fiscal year 22. Some things kind of linger for a little bit, and it takes a little bit to process all the final payments and close out any, um, payments for staff that have separated. So there is still some, um, changes that'll be happening from the budget in FY22, but that's, um, the part of the normal process. Um, and then we have built our budget for FY23. We take the tentative budget from the, that's approved by the board. We put it into, um, actuality and build all of our independent budgets. So it's got some updates that I'd like to share with the board on that, on both of these things. So first of all, um, just, uh, as we looked at our overall ending budget for FY22, we did have unanticipated additional funds, um, that were reflected in our budget, which when we have additional funds that come from things, that will also increase our expenditures, just depending on how that, how those are spent. So we did have the austerity reduction refunded, um, and that added about $1.3 million to our budget, um, for FY22. Um, we did also have funds paid from the state to give a $2,000 bonus to full-time staff, $1,000 to part-time staff, um, and then $1,000, um, I shouldn't say bonuses, I should say one-time salary adjustments, um, for various pay. So it was not a uniform $2,000 bonus for every employee, but I think our staff was so thankful that the board did approve for us to pass off, um, that bonus of $2,000 to every single employee. I know that made a big difference to so many of our staff, and they're very thankful for that. Uh, but that was an influx of $1.3 million from the state, um, in last year as well. But what, um, we had to fund some out of general fund to give all employees that $2,000 bonus. Held harmless, um, on enrollment for QBE. So even though we did not meet expected enrollment last year, that the state had projected us to be at, they did not deduct any of that on our QBE formula. So the money they sent us was equal to two years ago, uh, but they will be adjusting it this year. So we do anticipate, um, our upcoming budget has reflected a decrease in enrollment, um, and a decrease in our QBE allotment. Um, so then as we look forward to 2023, this is just a reminder of the priorities that we had set at the beginning of the budget process in the area of equitable outcomes for students. We wanted to increase the number of counselors and increase equity personnel with our equity coordinator and the game changer positions. Um, and then we also wanted to reward and recognize staff, making sure that we are attracting and retaining a diverse staff of exceptional quality. Um, so there we were addressing competitive compensation and staff development opportunities, and then also with operational excellence, ensuring that we are good stewards to the resources we're provided, um, from the community and the state, and then making sure that we continue to invest in safety and security. So these were the initial, um, FY23 budget changes that we had proposed, and there's two I'm going to talk about in a little more detail on the next slide, but we did add counselors at Decatur High School, Beacon Hill Middle School in Fayette. Um, we did implement a new staffing allotment formula, but we also said as a priority for the board was that we wanted to retain all staff that wanted to return to city schools of Decatur. I'm going to talk about how that's impacting our upcoming budget, or our current budget, I should say. Pay enhancements to, um, address critical, um, pay or competitive pay in some critical positions and align salaries for equitable pay, decreasing our operational budgets to help burden some of that decrease in, uh, student enrollment. Um, and just making sure we're operating very, as efficiently as possible. Uh, we did pass on step increases for every eligible employee, and a 5.4% raise was, um, decided on at the state level for bus drivers, monitors, school nurses. Um, and then that $2,000, um, increase in pay for teachers and counselors, um, also media specialists, principals, assistant principals. Um, so let me add a little bit of information. I just like to make sure that we are transparent and sharing, uh, what we find out as we go through this process. So when we created the new staffing allotment, I shared that with the board in January, and I shared a comparison of where we are on the QBE formula, which is the formula at the state level that address, uh, decides how much funds we get based on our student enrollment and services. And at that time, I shared that we were about 119, um, FTE over, which is a staff member over what we earn from the state. And that's okay, but we have to understand that if we want to staff over what the state gives us in any category at schools or at central office, we have to make sure that we are doing that in the, in with the understanding that that is going to impact the funds we have to raise locally. Um, so we did make a small adjustment to class sizes to help stay on some staffing points. And when we were looking at that new formula, we anticipated that we would be reducing our overall staff in the district by about 26 positions. Um, and but we also only wanted to eliminate positions that were vacant due to natural attrition. And so that was one of the caveats as we were implementing this new staffing allotment. So we finished staffing our schools. Um, at the end of the day, we realized that we were only able to eliminate 10 positions instead of that 26 that we had initially anticipated, um, to the board when we shared this information. Um, and I think what I, um, amiss for me was as we realized we were not cutting as many positions as we anticipated, I should have been sharing with the board some of these updates earlier on so that we could adjust the budget as we were going. So, um, it's a conversation, um, that we're going to have, um, with the board here in a moment. So we can kind of talk about what are, what are the next steps that the board wants to see going forward. Um, so as I said, we've got to, um, about 11 positions, um, that we had initially planned on eliminating from the budget will still potentially be in our FY23 budget.
Can I actually ask a real quick question on the page? Just a clarifying question? If you're saying that we anticipated that we reduce by 26 positions and we only eliminated 10, by my math, that's 16 positions.
Sorry, that's a typo. That should be 16. Sorry. Thank you for catching that, Hans. As I was reading it, I was like, oh, typo. Sorry.
Okay, so it's 16 positions that are in the budget now that we did not anticipate having in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for catching that. Um, but then I'm also in, um, requesting an amendment as we, um, kind of finalize, um, make, look at our operationalized budget with everything built into the system. Um, so I had spoken to the board earlier about a communications and public relations coordinator. Um, I shared with the board that I think that is an essential position, uh, that we need to fill to help make sure that as we are working towards, creating a system where there's transparency in communication, there's accountability in communication, really have the need for that staff member at the central office. Um, equity coordinator, that is one that, again, it, I, as I mentioned, when I talked about our priorities, it's one we identified very early on. Um, and for some reason, it was between kind of changing with the staffing and looking how things were allotted in one place and positions, it's some, this one did not get put into the budget, but it should have been. Um, the Westchester music, uh, teacher had resigned or retired, I should say. And we, this is one of those positions that we had anticipated not having to fill. Um, so we were thinking, okay, we'll split a teacher between two lower elementaries. But then as they were building their schedules in June, there was just no way to create, uh, to split a teacher between two schools. So this is one of those areas that as we look at staffing with small schools and creating and trying to find the best way to create, um, the most efficient use of personnel. Um, this is one where we thought we would be able to, and at the end of the day, we were not. Uh, but the good news is, is that the disposition would also be able to support our three-five orchestra program. So I think it's a win-win for us as a school system to give, make sure we are, um, having a music teacher at Westchester to give those kids that early music experience, um, and then also supporting art orchestra program at our upper elementaries. Uh, the other, uh, remaining, uh, budget adjustments are some operational, um, adjustments for some upcoming projects. Um, one being the superintendent search contract. Uh, we also wanted to increase our transferred, our fuel, adjust the budget for our, um, transportation department because the fuel prices going up. Uh, we did get an increase on our premium, um, in our insurance, so we had to make an adjustment for that. And, um, the custodial contract, there is, um, a request to, so, um, to implement that custodial contract. So the total request for the board, uh, would be about $640,000 as an amendment to FY23 budget. Um, so this is the amended budget proposed to the board for discussion. Um, and we also, I've also wanted to point out that the, uh, there was an increase in revenue. Our tax digest came in higher than anticipated. So that did, um, impact our, our major revenue source for taxes. Uh, but also this increased expenditures for salaries and benefits, professional services, supplies, energy and equipment. Uh, we did decrease expenditures in our maintenance and grounds area. Uh, but then you'll also notice our fund balance has increased. Part of that is the $1 million from the tax digest, uh, that we want to put directly into the. that we want to put directly into the fund balance. And then at the end of every year, we have unspent funds typically. So those at the end of the FY twenty-two budget, they get sucked all back into the general fund. So and that was about two point one, two point two million dollars there. But you can see our overall projected fund balance there. So that is the budget amendment. I just wanted to also update the board and share the information about the staffing allocations and what that change was. And then open for the board discussion on this amendment.
Are there any questions from the board for Dr. Furman?
Yes, this is, this is the first of two. We still have there's some amount of funding that's going to be required to cover personnel going forward that we're going to see in August. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that's, that's hopefully what we can discuss tonight so that we can look forward to what that second budget amendment is going to be in August. So the sixteen positions that we wanted to try to eliminate, we were not able to eliminate. Because we just had to replace the staff that were leaving and then we were not able to find another, you know, positions that could be eliminated. So as we wanted to keep staff in our school system that want to work for us, we have them coming back. So that is the board, that's a discussion for the board on, you know. What do we do?
And in aggregate.
Where do we find?
In aggregate. Sorry, Dr. Furman, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. You're fine.
There's gonna say in aggregate, in aggregate, that dollar amount is roughly two and a half million dollars. I just want to have something in the back of our heads. Roughly two and a half million.
Point one.
Two point one million. Okay, so for this budget amendment, which would take our budget up to eighty-six some million dollars, we would be talking about about an eighty-eight or eighty-nine million dollar budget with that with that included. Okay. So, so if we look historically, the last year that there was no effect of COVID. Right? I mean, that, that's twenty nineteen, right? If we go back to the twenty nineteen budget. We were operating a school system with fifty-six hundred students. So a little over a hundred more students than we have today. And so at, in the twenty nineteen budget, we had a something like a seventy-two million dollar budget. So three years later, we're talking about an eighty-nine million dollar budget, right? It's a seventeen million dollar increase in the budget in three years. And we're teaching a hundred fewer students now. So, yeah, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with where we are. And, and I think that we need to have some tough conversations about looking at where we are with expenses. It's hard, I mean, it's almost a twenty percent increase in the budget over the course of three years. And I understand disruptions due to COVID. I understand some of this is related to federal funds coming in and then us having to give some of those federal funds back. But, but if I'm a you know, this is a year where seniors are getting hit with tax bills for the first time in a number of years. Large, you know, six thousand plus dollar tax bills for the first time in a number of years. I, I, I just uncomfortable looking him in the face, saying that we're being as efficient as we possibly can. Seventeen million dollars is a huge increase over three years. And so I'm not comfortable unless we're talking about finding dollars in this budget to cover some of this. Moving forward, expending some of these funds in, in, in this way.
One thing I do want to add is as the influx of you know, funds came in from the state for two thousand, that's going to be, you know, add to our overall budget. So as we increase future salary by two thousand dollars per teacher and administrator. You know, that's going to overall increase our total budget. So that's part of that, I think. I think we have to put that into context as well. Um, and as you mentioned, CARES funds, there were personnel that we had hired through CARES funds that we had to put back into the budget this year. That was over three million. So there we're talking about already an increase in our overall budget by about five million dollars. So I think that accounts for some of this growth. I do agree, student enrollment is decreasing. That's why we adopted the new staffing allocation formula to try to decrease operational costs overall. To address that. Like I said, I was very, I think eager or, you know, made a, you know, a prediction on what we could decrease the budget this year. Obviously, it was not as impactful on our overall budget as I was hoping it would be. But we are looking at adjusting our staffing allotments to address that decrease in decrease in enrollment. The other challenge that I'll be having for my cabinet members this year is really looking at their budgets and identifying some similar districts that have similar student enrollment, similar operations, so that we can make sure we are operating within an acceptable parameter of a budget for, let's say, operations, teaching and learning. So those are some things that are on the agenda to talk about with cabinet to make sure that we are having those tough conversations about what, what are we spending per student in this department? Okay, what do they spend in that same department in another school district? And if we're way high, what do we need to do to get it back down to that kind of reasonable level?
And one of the things, I mean, so I, I, I understand that I'm going kind of hard on this point. I want to acknowledge that a lot of this stuff happened in the previous administration. And so we're kind of picking up some of those pieces. One of the reasons that it got to where it got to frankly, is that we spent down the reserve rather than seeing it on a, on a year-to-year basis. And so part of what we're attempting to do right now is shore the reserve back up so that we're in a healthy place. So I do understand all of these. The other thing is that there's no way to fix, you know, if it took us three years to create an issue, we're not going to fix it in one budget. I do actually also understand that. But, you know, if it took us three years to get us in this place, I would want to see a clear plan on how to get back out of this place within three years. And I would also want to be extraordinarily disciplined about what we hold the line on now.
Thank you. Go ahead. To add to that, Hans. I think I would like to see if the board, rest of my board members agree a breakout of the items that contribute to that seventeen million. And so that we can really look at the parts that we really can't do anything about. And then where, where are the efficiencies of any? Because I don't want to throw that whole seventeen million in that pot. Because as we were just talking about, that's not really what we're working with. So what what is that number that we really can work with to bring down? And what were the other numbers related to COVID and the CARES Act and promotions that we can put in a separate bucket that we can't touch? So I would just love to see that broken out at some point, and I think we'd be able to tackle potential inefficiencies better.
Okay, agreed.
Dr. Sultan, you have any questions?
No, I think it is, it is worth noting that on a positive note, the fund balance has gone up. I think with some of the noteworthy changes that we've made, like the adjustment to the teacher salaries, those are things that we were committed to investing in. And despite that, we've seen an increase in the fund balance. So that's a noteworthy achievement. But there are kind of, to piggyback off of Tasha's point, there are some areas of the budget that are one-time expenses and there are some things that we're investing over multiple years. So that might provide the community some context as to where their tax dollars are. Where they're going, kind of what they're investing in over multiple years where they may see some things in the budget for years and years as opposed to one-time increases. And that might provide a little bit more context when we're talking about large investments or amendments. So just a suggestion for when we come back next time, some more long-term investments that we may be, that we may have there as opposed to one-time expenses.
Agreed. Yeah, I think that'll be really key to look at.
If there are no other questions, may I have a motion to approve the budget amendment one for fiscal year twenty-two-three?
I, I would, I would actually like to request from the administration that we adapt the amendment to, I'm, I'm okay authorizing some of the positions, but I want to see the positions, I want to see those efficiencies found in the budget. And so adapt, but you know, we can authorize the positions, but not fund the positions or fund the positions out of savings that we expect to see in the budget.
So board members, what are your thoughts about that?
Given that we have two and a half million dollars coming our way of additional expense that's about to show up.
Dr. Sultan, were you gonna say something?
No, I, I think, I don't think that's unreasonable. I think I think it's, I think we can, we can, we can approve the positions as they stand. I don't think, I don't, I don't think that positions as they're funded is an unreasonable amount of money. I think maybe the question for us over the next month between now and the August meeting is is, do we need to approve, do we need to expand the budget or can that amount of money be found in the budget as it stands now? So that's maybe a question for Maggie and Lonita.
Furthermore, the consult, the, the custodial contract, which was pitched to us when we approved it a month and a half ago, was pitched to us as an efficiency. The reason why we were doing it was to drive efficiencies. So it boggles my mind that it's going to cost us a hundred and sixty thousand incremental dollars. It ought to save us money. That's what an efficiency does. If it's going to cost us more money, then I would rather us not do the custodial contract. And so I'm also willing to authorize moving forward with the custodial contract, presuming minimally it's budget neutral, preferably it drives savings, but I'm not comfortable authorizing a hundred and sixty additional thousand dollars for a contract that's supposed to be saving us money.
Professor Man, can I, can I chairman on that?
Yeah, please do, Sergio.
So, so we are anticipating will be budget neutral once we reach to three more vacant positions so that a hundred and sixty-six thousand is about the cost of a three, three point five positions of custodians. Today we have about seven vacant positions. And we have additional four custodians that we use as a substitute for covering sick leave, personal time, FMLA, vacation time. But we also have a very difficult time trying to hire and keep reliable staffing. So but still, we still have to keep our buildings clean and desinfected. Moving forward, we're going to see additional savings on workers' compensation, benefit retirement, PICA taxes, and also the workload for the HR and finance department. So my projection is probably before November, we're going to see a budget neutral and that, and we can present a report to the board where we can demonstrate that we are there.
So I know that Attorney Wilson is, is online with us and I just want to get clarification. Do we take a vote on the amendment as it is presented now? And then if it doesn't have the votes, then there is a motion made to, for a different amendment, a different vote, Mr. Wilson?
If there's amendment proposed, well, I don't believe there was a motion made and seconded. If I recall correctly, for the amendment, I think there was a call for the motion and then Mr. Oates stepped in. So whatever he is proposing, if it gets a second, would be the primary motion on, on the table. If there was a second of the first one, and I don't think there was, then his motion, if it gets a second, is an amendment and it would be taken up first.
Okay.
So do I need to, oh, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
Was there a second to the, to the motion? I don't believe there was a second to the original motion, was there?
There wasn't. I, I didn't really, I don't think I really got a chance to get it out.
Right.
So it would be up to someone to either make a motion to approve the original motion or Mr. Oot to make a motion for something different. If it gets a second, that is what would be on the floor.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna start over? All right. May I have a motion to approve the budget amendment one for fiscal year twenty-three? Motion to approve the amendment for the budget fiscal twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three.
Second, we need second, right?
Yes.
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Yeah, hold on a second. If, if there's a motion to amend, if there's not, then you vote on that motion. If there's a motion to amend, that a motion to amend would, with a second, would take precedence. But if there's no motion to amend, you do go forward with that motion.
So the motion was to approve the amendment.
I haven't made an amendment, though. I want to, I want to make sure I'm clear on what I'm proposing as the amended motion.
So I thought the first vote was on whether we want to approve the motion, the budget amendment for fiscal year twenty-three. That's what I was.
You can vote on it if there's not a proposed amendment, but you can also amend it after voting on it.
So there is a proposed amendment. No, 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 okay.
So I guess the question is, right now there's a motion that has been seconded on the floor.
To approve a budget amendment one.
But at that point, a motion to amend takes precedence if such is presented and seconded. If not, then you vote on your motion. Even after it is passed, there can be a motion to amend what you just passed.
Got it.
I move to amend the amended budget proposal in front of us now to include funding for the communications and public relations coordinator position, funding for the GSBA superintendent search, fuel cost increase, and increased insurance premium. Furthermore, to approve the position but not fund the equity coordinator and the Westminster, Westchester music teacher and three-five orchestrator program director, positions that will be funded out of efficiency savings that Dr. Furman will identify. Custodial contract will also be funded out of efficiency savings that Dr. Ferguson will identify.
Okay, so now I
He asked if there's a second for that motion.
Is there a second?
May I have, sorry.
May I have a second for that motion?
Without a second, the amendment proposal fails. Does not have viability at this point. So now you're back to your original motion to approve the proposed budget amendment.
Okay, so now I can, all in favor, say aye?
Or unless there's further discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
So the only, the only difference between Hans's amendment is that he's saying that we need to find the, the funds, the funds need to, needs to be found for those positions in the existing budget.
Right.
For the, for positions other than the communications position.
And, and I'm, and would it be an understanding if we agreed to that? If the superintendent and the CFO were unable to find the funds within the budget, that we would then not be approving those positions?
That's not what I'm understanding. Is that what you were proposing in your?
That's what, yeah. So that's what I'm asking. If we, if we Hans's motion and we get to the point where we are unable to then fund those positions through the existing budget, what then? Since we're not approving, if we potentially did not approve the funding for it right now? Mr. Oats?
No, no, the, the positions will be approved and at the discretion of the superintendent to fill. Presuming that she would be able to find the funds to fill it. I want to point out that we have an eighty-five, eighty-six million dollar budget. The funding for the positions that we're describing is less than point one five percent, right? It's a basis point of the budget. So the, you know, based on my expertise with budgets, the money is going to be able to be found from those positions, presuming that they're a priority.
My concern is potentially what would have to be cut to fund those positions. And so I, I, my concern is what will be cut and, you know, that, I guess that's it, that's it. So so, um, Attorney Wilson?
There, there has been no second of the proposed amendment. That takes you back to the original motion.
Okay, and.
Do I, wait, go ahead.
And so now I can call for everyone to say aye?
Or nay?
Got it.
Or, or do we, or do we second? So.
We're voting now because we already seconded the original motion.
But we're going back to the, to, to vote on the.
Because we had our discussions and now we can go back to.
Okay. All right. So all in favor, um, of approving budget amendment one for fiscal year 23, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Nay.
All right. Thank you. Um, how does board chair vote? Aye. Awesome. Sorry about that. Uh, all right, so the budget amendment one for fiscal year 23 is approved. Our second action item this evening is the approval of the new board policy IKBB divisive concepts complaint resolution process. And just for clarification, I asked what that IKBB stands for. So it's part of the naming convention of policies, um, that the state gives us. And so Dr. Furman, will you share an overview of this new policy for the board?
Yes. Um, so this new policy is one we are required by law. We cannot waive this as a charter system. So we have to put this policy into place. Um, and this policy is very much mirroring, um, the, what was proposed in the bill that was passed at the Georgia legislature about allowing a, a community member, a parent, I think, actually, sorry, a parent to file a complaint saying that they feel that one of these six divisive concepts was being taught in their student, their child's classroom. Um, it's a very clear process for how we would handle those, um, as a, as a school system. Um, after the board approves this, then we have to create a procedure for what that, how we would operationalize this policy. Um, but basically it sets up the timeframes, it sets up, um, how we would handle and what any kind of consequences would be put in place. Uh, but then we've got to operationalize that with a procedure, which is, um, something that we will, uh, get to work on as soon as this is approved. This policy was drafted by GSBA. Um, so I am recommending that the board approve this as written, um, as it was, um, shared with us from GSBA and very much mirrors what we need to have in the policy.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? All right. Is there a motion to approve board policy IKBB divisive concepts complaint resolution process?
Uh, move to approve divisive concepts policy. I, do I have to say the exact one or is that sufficient? That's sufficient. Okay, thank you.
I may have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Board policy IKBB is approved. Um, there are no items for information, um, this month. Uh, we will now move on to our discussion items for this evening. Dr. Furman, your team provided their state of the department reports for the board's review. This month, we received reports from the Equity and Student Services, Teaching and Learning, and State and Federal Programs. Are there any questions from the board on these reports? All right. Um, the next discussion item is the academic calendar for the upcoming 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 school years. Dr. Furman, will you please update the board on the academic calendar options?
Yeah, so what we, um, what we did is we put out some options for review. We had each, um, school go through a protocol to provide some feedback and some review on these proposed calendars. And there were several options provided out there to the community and to the staff. And then we did a survey with our community to gather feedback from our families. And as we have been reviewing and assessing that information, there is very much to, a two-sided, um, take on the calendar. So our, our parents, um, want to keep the current calendar kind of organization that we have, um, with two early release days, um, right before the breaks. Um, the teachers very much want additional early release days built into the calendar for professional development. Um, so what Ms. Burnett and I are going to do is take a look at all the feedback again and come up with another option to put out there, um, for consideration. So we think we're able to kind of meet what the parents want, um, while also providing some time for teachers to get that much needed professional development, while not extending their workdays. Um, I'm trying to really be reasonable about that. So, um, just want to let the board know that, um, we're gonna go back and create another option and get some more feedback on that and then bring that to the board next month for review and discussion.
Board members, are there any questions? All right, now final discussion item this evening is the new math course of options for acceleration. Um, Dr. Bean will be leading this presentation. Hi, Dr. Bean.
Hello, how are you? I don't know if I'm sharing my screen or if, um.
Can't see your screen yet.
Yeah.
You want me to run the presentation for you, Kristy?
Yeah, that would be great. Oh, wait, no, I'm, I'm a co-host now.
All right, go for it.
Thank you. Let me get back to the beginning here. Sorry about that. Well, hang on one second. Okay, now we're ready. Okay, well, thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, the purpose of the presentation tonight is to inform you about some upcoming shifts in the math pathways um, in City Schools of Decatur. And this is upcoming for the 23, 24 school year. So plenty of time to help our community understand the rationale and talk through the changes. So here we have, help me move our faces here so we can see everything. So here we have the timeline, um, that we're looking at. And actually, this process began in 2020 when we were, um, during our closure for COVID. Um, when we were in virtual learning, we started talking through this process. And in August of 2020, our City Schools of Decatur District Math Team, which consists of school, uh, and teacher leaders and school leaders throughout the district from kindergarten through 12th grade, uh, really began looking at a math program review. And as they began that review process, one of the recommendations from the team is that we look at our policies and practices around math acceleration. And you'll hear more about the reasons for that shortly. Um, but again, throughout this past school year, the 21, 22 school year, um, our district math team, we met several times and we read research and we looked at the data, both student achievement data, um, and our, the input from teachers, from teacher surveys and such. Um, and we discussed how we could best improve our policies and practices around math acceleration. Well, in the meantime, at the same time throughout this school year, the Georgia Department of Education has released new courses that'll be aligned with the new Georgia standards, uh, the new Georgia math standards that are being released. And then, um, they have also recommended new math pathways as well. So that was, um, great timing. Okay, there we go. So what you're seeing here, um, is our current, hold on, sorry. So let me back up just a little bit. So again, this is not a recommendation beginning now. This is a recommendation beginning in 23, 24. So our recommendation for the upcoming school year, the 22, 23 school year, is to communicate to our community, to gather feedback, and to prepare for implementation. And so, you know, what we would like to know from our community is what information they need to understand, um, what questions they have, and how we can best support the transition. Um, and so you can see that, you know, we want to start out with our teachers. Um, of course, we've included, um, our teacher leaders, as we mentioned, and our, our school leaders at Decatur High School and Beacon Hill Middle School throughout the process. Um, but we want to engage all of our teachers, um, in this. When they return in a couple of weeks, then we will start rolling out the information to families, um, roll out informational sessions to SLTs and then start having parent sessions and then continue the process throughout the year until we, um, you know, start signups for sixth grade students coming in, in the spring. So this is our current math sequencing starting, um, in sixth grade. Um, and so it's a, it's a little bit complex, as you can see. And so, um, for a few reasons, um, there are some recommendations, again, from the district math team to make some revisions. And there's a few reasons for that that I'd like to talk through. Um, first reason, which, um, again aligns with, with many other areas in the district, is that who is participating in accelerated math, um, we see is disproportionate. So we can see that, um, the number or the percentage of black students that are in accelerated math, especially at Beacon Hill Middle School, does not align with the number of black students that are in our district. And so we need to look at the criteria. Why is that? Why are black students not being, um, you know, not, not, um, participating in these higher level courses? And so we want to encourage that. Um, so we can see the numbers at the top. We can also see the total number of students at Decatur High School. We have about 1,680 students, I believe, at Decatur High School. So about half the students are currently in some accelerated math program. So so that is one of the reasons. But there are some other reasons that we really need to dig into. And first of all, um, math leaders, the, the National Council on Teachers of Mathematics and Leadership in Mathematics, National Leadership Councils, um, are really recommending that we, um, you know, detract math, that we, um, really provide these higher level opportunities for mathematics for all of our students. And so that is one of the recommendations. Again, we also have the recommendations from the Georgia Department of Education and their position statement, um, on acceleration. And then finally, um, we want to better prepare our own students for higher level mathematics. Um, it's, we are starting to fall behind other districts in offering higher, the highest levels of mathematics in those, um, upper grades. And we want to do that. When we look at our, um, AP exams, for example, we can see that we are not even meeting Georgia average, um, pass rates. Now, there's a lot of factors that go into this. And as we know, um, we tend to emphasize IB over AP. So there's many factors that go into this. But we want to be leaders in all areas. So there is no reason that, um, we're not far exceeding the state of Georgia averages, much less not even meeting them um, in calculus scores for AP. And then when we look at our IB scores, um, now these are a little, I don't know how much we want to put into these scores. I'm, I'm very excited to analyze this year's scores and look at where we are because 2020 and 2021, we did not have the typical assessments. Um, so we have to take that kind of, you know, with, with a grain of salt. But, um, we do, we do have world averages to compare to. And, um, you can see in 2020, we didn't, um, meet those. And that was in standard level. And then in high level, we exceeded. Um, I was trying to get the number of students that, um, these are our highest level, um, math students. So I was trying to get the number that participated, but I wasn't able to get that right off the bat. Um, and then here, we want to see, you know, so what are the recommendations here for going forward? So for the 2023 school year, we will continue our current practice. And then, you know, one of the reasons for that is that we need time to implement. So we need time to get, you know, all of our stakeholders to understand the recommendations. We also need time to make sure that our teachers, um, we need, you know, to make sure our teachers meet the certification requirements. We'll need more, um, we'll need to work with our eighth grade teachers on getting certification. Um, we'll need to work with, um, have more geometry certification at the high school. So that kind of thing. So we need to make sure our staffing is where it needs to be and that kind of thing. So we want to make sure we have a solid communication plan for our families this year and, um, that we're ready to implement these, these changes going forward, um, when students sign up for classes in the spring of next year. So this is the recommendation from the DOE, from the Georgia Department of Education. And you can see that now there are three decision points. So starting in seventh grade, students make a decision. And now instead of, um, us using this criteria to decide whether a student will go into advanced mathematics, the, the students and the families themselves make that decision. We will provide them with, this is what a student is going to need. These are test scores, grades, readiness that a student needs to be successful. But ultimately, um, the families will make those decisions. So they'll have decision point one. Then after ninth grade, they'll have decision point two. And then after 10th grade, there will be decision point three. So you see it's like a one A, one, or one A, one B and two, but it's really three decision points. So you can see that, um, there. And then when we break it down specifically to the courses of, um, Beacon Hill Middle School and Decatur High School, this is what it will look like in Decatur. So this is where it's very important that, you know, we start with our teachers when they come back in a couple of weeks so that we make sure that all of these courses at our advanced level courses in 11th and 12th grade are properly placed and that we are having all of our students, you know, that everything's where it belongs before, you know, we start rolling it out to families. But you can see those three decision points are there as well. So students have, it, it's really nice because, you know, we're not getting students kind of on a track or, or you can't get onto that track. It's like students can, can make those choices. So if I'm not quite prepared, when I get into seventh grade, we can have some options and some supports moving forward so that I can be prepared when I get to ninth grade or, or 10th grade. So. So one of the questions is what would happen, what's going to happen to students who are currently taking that Algebra I Geometry A class this year? So we do have to have something because that's going to be kind of that gap that we're going to have to fill. And so we've, we've come up with three options for that, that we can support those students with to get them, uh, set to move into the new pathway. And so one of those is that the students can take the full geometry course the, the following year in ninth grade. Um, they can take geometry B over the summer, uh, virtually, or they can take geometry B the following year, um, through DVA. So either way, they can take it virtually, um, you know, either, either over the summer or the next school year. Uh, one of the other things that we need to prepare throughout this year is again, those clear guidance documents so that we are giving families good information, that we are helping them understand, um, what it is that they need to know to make these decisions. So they are making well-informed decisions for, um, their students. Um, again, that staffing is going to be really important, that we make sure we have the right people in the right spots and that we give our teachers, um, you know, the opportunities to get, get prepared, um, to support the students, that we're making sure that we are supporting the under, um, our traditionally underrepresented students in these, um, programs so that they are getting the support that they need so that they are successful in, um, these accelerated options and making sure that, um, they are considering these accelerated options. And then, um, we want to be sure, you know, and then the other thing to consider is, so we, we know that we have students that need acceleration or that are ready to engage in higher level mathematics prior to eighth grade. Um, one thing we have to always be cautious about in mathematics. And when, one thing that's always, um, it's always something that happens in math is when, when students are young and they're, um, catching on very quickly and they're learning algorithms very quickly and they're adding, subtracting in their head and they're doing things. And, you know, parents want to quickly accelerate and even sometimes teachers want to quickly accelerate. Um, but then what we find is that without those firm conceptual foundations and without those deep understandings, what happens is they move through rapidly and they don't develop those real firm foundations that they need to be successful in higher level mathematics. They're grazing over learning, um, kind of skimming the serpent, surface. And so while they're learning those algorithms and, and just being able to run through those steps, they're not learning really what they need. And so we have to be very careful that we are supporting them. And so that's why we see those students not doing as well in the higher level mathematics that we would want them to see. So that's, that's one thing. But we know we do have those students and we do have students that are, um, very highly talented in mathematics. And so how do we support them? We support them through the MTSS process. The MTSS process is to, is, is designed to support students, um, that need, that are performing above grade level just as much as it is designed to support students that are performing below grade level. So we have a screening process for all students and we, um, screen students that are, um, you know, performing above grade level expectations. We use triangulation in that data, meaning that we don't just look at one piece of data. We look at if the student is performing above grade level, but the student is. We look at if the student is performing above grade level, but the student is still growing in their class. Well, then that's great. That shows that that class is meeting that student's needs. So we have to look at several pieces of data to see, is the student performing at a high level? But is, you know, and is the student's needs being met? Um, if not, we develop a tier-two intervention plan. We develop the individualized learning. We use online learning. We use enrichment opportunities with the classroom and the gifted teacher. Um, if that's still not enough, then we move to tier three, just like we would with a student that might need, um, and, you know, and, uh, remediation supports. So we move to a tier-three intervention for these students. That means that, again, we, we amp up those supports. Now, they might be taking a separate course. They might be taking, um, you know, some, we might develop a, a individualized learning path for them, or what have you. At some point, we would meet with SST, and then we would determine if that student needs a single-subject acceleration, or something like that. Um, that would come into play. Again, that would be determined through a student support team through the MTSS process. Again, differentiated learning within the classroom should meet the needs. It's designed to meet the needs of ninety-seven percent or more of our students. So what we're talking about on this slide is a very small number of students who, whose needs are just so extreme that they cannot be met through grade-level instruction. So we do have a plan for that as well. So in summary, there's no changes until the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This school year is designed to inform, this is our first step, getting you a sneak peek. So we're here to inform the community and prepare for implementation. And the reason for this plan is to create more equi- increase equitable outcomes, increase, um, allow our students greater access to higher-level courses, and to better prepare our students for higher-level mathematics. So, thank you. Are there questions?
This may not be particularly answerable, but I, I actually think there's probably a mental health benefit here. Like you're reducing some of the stress by providing multiple on-ramps and some potentially off-ramps, uh, so that, you know, students that are in the process of it aren't necessarily as, um, pressured, I think is the right way to say it. I don't know if you can speak to that at all, but I, I mean, I, I appreciate the fact that we're actually providing multiple points of entry and some potential points of exit that, that allows students to kind of self-adjust as they mature.
Yeah, I, I, I think so, and I hope so. And I think, you know, it also provides, um, to that point, you know, if there is a student, let's say that expresses interest, um, in seventh grade, but maybe it's not a good fit. And we meet with that student, and, um, we say, hey, you know, what if we take this year, we, we do these extra things, we provide these supports, and then we talk about it, you know, so we can meet with the families, and we can counsel the families, and we can talk about, you know, where a student needs to be. And again, you know, they can ultimately choose, but we need to have the supports in place, because what we don't want to do is set students up for, you know, we want to, we want to set all students up for success. So, um, while, you know, it is ultimately the students', um, and families' option, you know, we, we do want them to be successful. So we want to be sure there's, the supports are there. But I think, yeah, I definitely think having those on and off ramps is, is definitely a huge, um, yes, stress reliever. That's what, that's a great way to put it.
Dr. Bean, can you clarify for folks a little bit better, and you may have said this, what the qualifying factors are, and kind of how standardized test scores like MAPS are going to fit into this a little differently from where they do now? Is this all kind of based on student interest and parent referral, um, or teacher referral? Are standardized test scores kind of going away onto the accelerated math, uh?
So the way, I, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt. Yeah, so the way it's designed now, um, yes. So the way the new pathways would work is it would be, um, we would give guidance. We would say, you know, students that are successful in these courses typically have these test scores, these grades, um, et cetera, et cetera. So we would give kind of a profile of the student that would be successful. You need to have this level of readiness. You need to have mastered X, Y, Z. Um, but ultimately, there would not be a gatekeeper there. You know, the gatekeeper would be the parents and the students', um, willingness to, to do it. Um, now, one thing to keep in mind, you know, once you get to ninth grade, these are for credit courses. So the courses have to be successfully passed in order to get the credit. So, um, again, you know, we want to be sure we're setting students up for success. So it's not going to be necessarily designed for everyone, but we want to be sure that all students that have the desire and, you know, the, the readiness to, to take these courses are able to take these courses, so. Yeah.
I just wanted to thank you for your presentation, Dr. Bean. Um, that was very thorough, and I especially appreciate you, um, uh, going over the timeline and what, um, parents and stakeholders can expect now, and what they can expect, you know, going down, going down the road. So, um, thank you for putting that together, and I look forward to, you know, this kind of opening up and getting some more feedback from stakeholders on how they feel about this particular pathway. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bean. Um, the next agenda item is board training. Um, I believe each board member receives a transcript of their recorded hours for the year. Um, as a reminder, all board members need at least ten hours of official training each year. At first, your board members need fifteen hours of training. Um, link to the agenda is the GSBA course catalog. Board members are reminded to complete their training hours by the end of this calendar year. Um, we have future dates listed on the agenda for upcoming meetings, trainings, and retreats. Board members, are there any questions about future dates, um, for the work of the board? No, um, I want to say I neglected to mention that, um, Mr. James Herndon is not with us tonight, um, because he lost his father yesterday. And I would ask the community to, you know, please keep, um, Mr. Herndon and his family in their, um, hearts and prayers. Um, I also, um, wanted to mention that a community member emailed. I didn't see it till we were too further along in the agenda, but, um, that the public comments had closed before, um, they were able to make a comment. So I just asked Dr. Furman if you could look into that, um, for, um, our next meeting, to make sure that, you know, if, if members want to talk, that the timing of everything is correct.
Yeah, I'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, if there are no other questions or discussions, I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening. And, um, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty PM. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.